Welcome to the August 31st, 2017, meeting of Little Rock Planning Commission. I want to welcome everyone here as we convene. I don't have the agenda open, but I'll wing this. Do I need a motion for approval of the amendments?
How about I call, Roe first?
That would be good. Thank you. Roe call.
Okay. Chairman Berry?
Here.
Vice Chair Bubba's?
Here.
Commissioner Bonham?
Here.
Commissioner Cox?
Here.
Commissioner Dillon?
Commissioner Finney?
Here.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Here.
Commissioner La Tour?
Here.
Commissioner Steppens?
Here.
Commissioner May? You have ten members present, you do have a quorum. Now you can do your minutes.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Do I hear a motion for approval of the minutes of the July 20th meeting, please?
Yes, I move for approval of the meeting minutes from July 20th.
I'll second.
We have a motion that's been seconded for approval of the minutes of the July 20th, 2017 meeting. Do I buzz approve, signify by raising your hand? Those opposed? Minutes have been approved. Okay, now we can proceed to the consent agenda, please.
Little Rock Planning Commission subdivision consent agenda, August 31st, 2017. Items for consent withdrawal, item six, file number Z-2502-E. Hogland addition revised long form PCD located on the southwest corner of West Fortieth Street and Whitfield Street. The applicant submitted a request dated July 31st, 2017, requesting withdrawal of this item without prejudice. Staff is supportive of the withdrawal request. Items for consent deferral, item D, file number Z-5817-I. Fifteen thousand Cantrell Road, short form PDC located at fifteen thousand Cantrell Road. The applicant submitted a request dated August 15th, 2017, requesting deferral of this item to the October 12th, 2017 public hearing. Staff is supportive of the deferral request. Item number E, file number Z-6323-X, The Village at Rawling Road revised long form PCD located on the southwest corner of Rawling Road and Rawling Circle. The applicant submitted a request dated August 15th, 2017, requesting deferral of this item to the October 12th public hearing. Staff is supportive of the deferral request. Item number 13, file number Z-9247, 7624 Colonel Glen Road, short form PCD located at 7624 Colonel Glen Road. The applicant submitted a request dated August 28th, 2017, requesting deferral of this item to the October 12th, 2017 public hearing. Staff is supportive of the deferral request. The deferral request will require a waiver of the commission's bylaws with regard to the late deferral request. Items for consent approval, item C, file number S-293-A, Waterford Apartments revised subdivision site plan review located at 701 Green Mountain Drive. Staff recommends approval of the request, subject to the applicant providing to traffic engineering detailed drawings on the sign location and dimensions for approval prior to the issuance of a sign permit. Staff recommends approval of the variance from section 36552 to allow an increase in the height and sign area for the two signs to serve the existing multifamily development. Item number F, file number Z-8643-A, M&amp;K Incorporated, short form PCD located at 7020 Colonel Glen Road. Staff recommends approval of the request, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions as outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F of the Agenda staff report. Item number G, file number Z-9228, Combs Short Form PDC located at 9010 Hilarious Springs Road. Staff recommends approval of the request, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions as outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F of the Agenda staff report. Item number one, file number S-1797, Northern Tool Edition Preliminary Final Platte located at 10100 Interstate 30. Staff recommends approval of the request, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions as outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F of the Agenda staff report. Item number two, file number S-1798, Lamar's Place Villas Preliminary Platte located on the northeast corner of Forest Lane and Lamar's Drive. Staff recommends approval of the request, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions as outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F of the Agenda staff report. Staff recommends approval of the variance request from the land alteration ordinance to allow grading of the development with the installation of the basic infrastructure. Item number three, file number S-207-C, Bowman Heights Apartments revised subdivision site plan review located at 420 Markham Mesa Place. Staff recommends approval of the request to allow modification to the previously approved signage plan as proposed by the applicant. Staff recommends approval of the variance from section 36552 to allow an increase in the height and sign area for the existing multifamily development. Item number four, S-344-Q, Lisa Academy subdivision site plan review located at 12200 West Haven Drive. Staff recommends approval of the request, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions as outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F of the Agenda staff report. Item number five, file number Z-4470-J, Chenal Park Center zoning site plan review located at 15200 Chenal Parkway. Staff recommends approval of the request, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions as outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F of the Agenda staff report. Staff recommends approval of the variance request from section 36-300E to allow a reduced side yard step back on the eastern perimeter. Staff recommends approval of the variance request to allow reduced parking as indicated on the site plan, and staff recommends approval of the requested waiver of the order board screening requirement. Item number seven, file number Z-4377-A, South Oaks Apartments revised long form PDR located at 3401 Fair Park Boulevard. Staff recommends approval of the request to allow modification to the previously approved signage plan as proposed by the applicant. Item number eight, file number Z-6079-I, Little Rock Christian Academy revised long form POD located at 19010 Cantrell Road. Staff recommends approval of the request, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions as outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F of the Agenda staff report. Staff recommends approval of the deferral request of the bounded street ordinance requirement for the required street improvements to Cantrell Road until the development of the education building. Staff recommends approval of the variance request from the city's land alteration ordinance to allow grading of future phases with the development site with the construction of the indoor athletic field and baseball facility. Staff recommends approval of the variance request of the land use buffer along the western perimeter of the site where adjacent to the energy easement and transmission line. Item number nine, file number Z-7905-B, The Fountain Short Form PCD located at 2809 Kavanaugh Boulevard. Staff recommends approval of the request, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions as outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F of the Agenda staff report. Staff recommends the development continue to comply with the 2006 zoning board of adjustments conditions as follows. There is to be no outdoor speaker or amplification for the outdoor seating deck area. The employees of The Fountain are to park in the Delta Trust parking lot. The Fountain is to place signs on the front door window at 2809 Kavanaugh Boulevard informing customers of available parking in the Delta Trust parking lot. The deck is to be four feet from the southern property line to allow the underside, south side of the structure to be screened with lattice and planer boxes. Item number 10, file number Z-9244, Revel Cove Long Form PDR located at 15700 Pride Valley Road. Staff recommends approval of the request, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions as outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F of the Agenda staff report. Staff recommends approval of the variance request from the city's land alteration ordinance to allow grading of the lots with the installation of the basic infrastructure for the subdivision. And item number 11, files number Z-9245, 5615 L Street, short form PDR located at 5615 L Street. Staff recommends approval of the request, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions as outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F of the Agenda staff report, and that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, staff. Do I hear a motion on a bylaw waiver for item 13 first?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for a bylaw waiver for item 13 for late deferral.
Thank you. A second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to add the bylaw so we can defer item 13 till what time? October 12th. Those approved, signify by saying or raising their hand. Those do not approve? Okay. Motion passes for bylaw waiver.
I move for approval of the consent agenda with all staff recommendations and comments.
Okay. We have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion that's been seconded for approval of the consent agenda as read with all staff recommendations. Those approve, raise your hand. Those who do not? Okay. The consent agenda has been read. For those of you that items were our consent or deferral or withdrawal, you may be excused and get ready for the football game. And we'll get started in just a minute for the regular agenda. While we were transitioning here, I think I saw some fellow citizens who filled out a green card were rocking in, so if you've got a green card, please bring it up here. That'd be great. I'm trying to figure out which item.
I, Hamilton.
Okay. Before we get started on reading item A, I want to remind, this is, of course, was deferred from a previous time, and I appreciate it for those who came back. Just want to remind you of our longstanding practice that each side has 20 minutes. I have numerous cards for item A in opposition to it, and it would be, I would wager, we're not going to get to everyone in this stack of cards. I would, I suspect everyone will be saying very similar things, so I don't want you to think your voice is being squelched, but for respect for all speakers, for this item and other items on the agenda after you, I think this is a fair system for you, so be thinking about whether or not you want to speak, or if it's, things have been said for you. If you hadn't submitted a card, I'm not going to call on you. This is not going to be a food fight, Sean Hannity style, so there is some linear progression because we do make decisions on all these applications. So with that said, let's get started, Donna.
I'm going to introduce the item, and then Nat Traffic Engineering is going to come up and show a presentation, and then they'll come back to me to conclude the staff recommendation.
That's right.
Okay. Item A, file number Z-7500-F, Hamilton Apartments Long Form PDR located behind 14524 through 14810 Cantrell Road. The request is a rezoning of the site from R2 single family and PCD planned commercial development to PDR planned development residential to allow the development of a 10.67 acre site with multifamily development containing 250 units. The development is proposed with two interior courtyards which will contain a swimming pool, outdoor cooking areas, sports courts, and seating areas. The building exterior finish will be a combination of masonry and architectural cimentation panels. Didn't mess that one up. The roof will have a residential pitch and will be covered with architectural shingles. The maximum height proposed is 50 feet on the south side, 60 feet on the north. The site plan indicates a total building footprint of 98,925 square feet. The development is proposed in a single phase. The site plan includes 442 parking spaces, 22 of which will be under the building in the basement. The plan indicates of the 442 parking spaces, 36 are garages, 206 covered carport structures, and 178 open spaces, or uncovered spaces. Based on the typical ordinance requirement for parking for a multifamily, 342 parking spaces would typically be required. The site plan includes recreational area between the parking lot and the floodway, and the developers considering creating walking trails along the creek. The plan includes a placement of a dog park, detention pond with pavilion, picnic tables, and a park. The plan includes a small area for vegetable garden plots. The plan indicates the placement of six-foot-high perimeter fence constructed of a decorative aluminum. There will be brick and stone columns at the main entrances to the development, and development is proposed as a gated community. The applicant indicates the western driveway is the primary access to the development. The west driveway connects to the light at Taylor Loop and Cantrell Road. The applicant states the existing driveway will be expanded to allow 36 feet of pavement. The applicant proposes to close one of the access openings to the parking lot to Pinnacle Creek Retail Center on the west side of the access easement drive, and the applicant agrees to construct sidewalks on the west side of the access drive from the ramp to the new development. The backout parking currently located in the access drive will be removed and striped as a no parking zone, and then Nat's going to come forward.
My name is Nat Bunnyhetti. I'm with the Traffic Engineering Division. I'm going to give you a small presentation on how this development is going to impact the traffic flow on Cantrell and at the intersection of Cantrell Road and Taylor Loop. First of all, this is, this shows the general location where the apartments are going to be. It's on the northeast corner of Cantrell and Taylor Loop. If you know the Walgreens, pizza, cafe area is somewhat behind that. And this map shows the traffic counts, the daily, average daily traffic volume on Cantrell Road. This is from 2015, it's from the Highway Department traffic counts map. Probably the latest traffic counts may have increased somewhat. If you look at the counts, it's 26,000 vehicles to the east, I mean to the west, and 38,000 vehicles to the east of this intersection. So you can probably say at the intersection, it's probably around 30, 32,000 east-west combined. Next. And this slide shows the actual turn movement counts at the intersection, you know, how many vehicles are turning left, going through. So if you look at the numbers that are circled in red, those are some of the critical conflicting movements. At this intersection, we have a very heavy westbound left turn from Cantrell going to Taylor Loop south, and also northbound left turns from Taylor Loop going west on Cantrell. So those two are conflicting movements. That means you have to stop one to let the other go. In addition to this, we have a lot of east-west through movements, and this, these numbers are only for the AM. I think the kid got bored with my presentation. So maybe I'll bring some cartoons next time, probably. But anyway, if you look at the, you know, the numbers, we are dealing with very heavy left turns. So left turns are basically what kill the capacity of intersections. If you have through movements, you know, they can occur at the same time, east-west can occur at the same time, but when you have left turns, you have to stop the other directions, and as you see in the subsequent, you know, slides, we'll discuss that in next slides, please. And this one shows the current zoning, the approved zoning. That's a single-family residential and office warehouse, and based on the trip generation, we have a total of 860 estimated, you know, traffic, 24-hour volumes. And if you look at the top, you know, the red circle, you have, with the current approved zoning, you have very few left turns coming out of the development. It's only 20 in the peak hour. But if we change the zoning to multifamily, the apartments, you can see the increase in the trip generation. It's pretty much doubles the daily volume, 1649, and then the left turns also increased significantly, five-four actually, about 101, you know, coming out of. It's not entirely left turns, but most of it is probably going to be left turn coming towards the city. So these numbers, you know, show how the traffic volume is going to increase with the proposed zoning. Next slide. And currently, that intersection is pretty bad, you know, the level of service is pretty bad. You have, when you talk about levels of service, you start with A. A means it's perfect, there's no delay for any approach, you know, it's very little traffic, so you don't wait any time at all. But as you go down, A, B, C, D, this is at E, this intersection is level of service E, which is pretty bad, and with the proposed zoning, with the projected traffic, it's going to get to even worse level E. Next slide. And this one actually is a simulation of the traffic, you know, on how, this is not the exact scenario, but when you plug in the numbers and, you know, check where the queuing is going to be, with the existing timings, and with the increased traffic with the proposed zoning, you see on the north leg there, on the top of the screen, the traffic is going to back up into the driveway there because we're not changing any timing. We are trying to, you know, keep the traffic moving on Cantrell, but when you do that, there'll be a lot of backup on Taylor Loop on the north side. So you can see the queuing. This will be over in a few seconds. Yeah, you can see on the north leg on Taylor Loop, the vehicles are queuing. And now, obviously, people will call us and complain that, you know, we need more time to get out. So when we do that, the next slide will show the problem. This is still this, you know, the queuing on the north leg. You can see, you know, the traffic waiting to get out onto Cantrell. I think we have reached the end of this slide, the next one. Just go to page down. I think we are still on the previous slide. Okay, now, if you optimize the signal to allow, you know, traffic from the new development, what will happen is the east-west movement will have to be stopped to allow the new traffic. So now, during the AM, all the traffic that is coming towards town, they will be stopped, basically, you know, if you give more time. The problem with signals is you can't create additional time. You have to basically take time from one approach to give to another approach. You can't, you know, start creating time. You have only 60 seconds in a minute, so you have to take time from one approach and give it to another. And in this case, we are taking time away from Cantrell Road and giving it to Taylor Loop. So now you see the eastbound traffic during morning is going to be basically, you know, experiencing a lot of delay. So you basically have to decide, you know, which is the major flow there, and obviously Cantrell Road is the major flow, and we try to make sure that they're not experiencing, you know, significant delay because once they stop, it takes a long time for the platoon to start moving. You don't see a long queue on the north side on Taylor Loop, but you're experiencing significant And obviously, this, if you have been there, it's a pretty big problem in the morning, and the same scenario, you know, it will happen in the evening, but the queuing will be on the westbound side. So we can probably go to the next slide now. And the other thing to note is none of these intersections, you don't look at them as isolated intersections. These are not like way out in the county, just one intersection by itself. These are all part of a system. They're all timed together for, you know, progression. They all communicate with each other, and they work together. It's kind of like a dance troupe, you know, everybody is coordinating with everybody else. You can't just change, you know, one signal here and just leave it at that. You have to make changes at every intersection. So it becomes very difficult when you make adjustments to one signal. So you need to look at this as a system, not just one intersection. Next. So in summary, the intersection level of service is pretty bad now, and introducing additional conflicting traffic will make it worse, and maintaining existing signal timings to keep the east-west, you know, traffic flow smooth will increase queuing on the driveway, and if you give more time to the driveway, it will worsen the traffic on Cantrell. So we'll be dealing with a lot of, you know, problems, complaints, people, you know, getting So that is, in essence, you know, how this development is going to affect the traffic. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Cox?
Do you know the time schedule for the Highway Department's planned widening of Highway 10?
I unfortunately don't know the exact, you know, timeframe, but it's several years, you know, at least three to four years. Is that my guess? Mike, yeah, okay, Mike is nodding his head, so. It's still in the planning stages. They're working on some, you know, final configurations and taking, I think the public meetings have already been over. But as you know, the Highway Department, you know, anything with federal highway, highways, they always say, you know, it'll be two years, three years, but it can take five, seven years, who knows?
Any other questions of public works? Okay, let's proceed back to Donna.
Staff is not supportive of the applicant's request. The PCD zoning portion of the development was previously approved as roughly half of the development and was approved for approximately 40,500 square feet of office warehouse. Series indicated on the future land use plan is transitional. The remainder of the property is currently zoned and indicated on the land use plan for single-family at a density which would not exceed six units per acre. The developer is proposed, development is proposed containing a total of 10.67 acres and 250 units for an overall density of 23.4 units per acre. In staff's opinion, this development is proposed extremely dense and is not appropriate for the site, with the exception of the Cantrell Road frontage, which is predominantly commercial, the areas off of Cantrell are single-family residential. In recent past, there have been a couple developments of a similar development style which have been approved, but both of those were on property that was zoned to allow for a more dense multifamily development. Staff is not supportive. Staff does not feel this location is appropriate for multifamily development as proposed by the developer, and staff recommends denial of the request.
Okay. Thank you, staff. We have four cards for this application, and we have 18 cards against. I will ask the applicant to come up first, and if he wishes to make his presentation or state his case, or yield his time first to those that are speaking for, so.
Okay, well, I'm going to go ahead and speak first, and then we'll intersperse them when we have time.
Okay. Good. Go ahead.
Well, thank you, Chairman Berry, and the members of the committee. Thank you for hearing our petition for the Hamilton. There's a picture on the screen that, let's see here, there was a picture on the screen. Okay, this is a picture of the property. You can see how quality, it's a quality, very, very quality type property, that's 250 units. It's the same style as the Madison that was approved down on Chenal and Canis. We have the same architect, same, probably the same builder. The rents down there are going to be from $900, probably $1,500 or $1,600 a month. We're going to obviously check everybody that comes in, make sure that they're, that they're past our scrutiny to be there. So notice, all I'm trying to say there is that we're going to have a quality development. It'll be very high-end, similar to the River House down in the Riverdale area, and the Madison, and then this one. So we feel like it's a great spot for this location, and because, as you all know, West Little Rock is growing further to the west. It used to, Mississippi used to be the furthest road out, and then it used, well, university in Mississippi, well, now it's past. well now, it's past four thirty, and it's gonna be to, how, it's gonna be out to Chanel and, and Highway 10 in the next five to ten years. So people need to have a place to live. This is, this, this type of development is exactly what the, uh, the millennials, anywhere from twenty to thirty-five, they really want this type of space, they would like to be dense, and you know, before this time right today, the, I've always heard from the, from, from the, uh, the staff, and, uh, thank you for giving that report, Donna, but I've always heard from the staff that they want kinda like an infield type development, and so you could walk to or bike to de- development. Well, this is exactly what this is. We have our shopping centers, I've got two shopping centers in front of this space, the Pinnacle Creek and Pinnacle Station, about twenty-six thousand square feet each. We've got restaurants, Whole Hog is getting ready to open this, this, this week. We also have, um, uh, we, we've got Urgent Care in there, we've got Forbidden Gardens, we've got these restaurants that they can walk over there, which is gonna decrease the traffic. You know, they do talk about traffic, and yes, unless we wanna stop any development in West Little Rock, and if we wanna do that, then, then it's gonna be really a sad thing for Little Rock, because that means nothing else can be built out there, because anything that's built is gonna bring traffic to the area, and we understand it's gonna bring some traffic, but not much, and I think I'll, my, uh, traffic engineer, Ernie, will talk about that in a minute. But, um, we feel like that this is a great property, and, and, as you'll see up here, now, these are some of the properties that I have, I've been developing in Little Rock for over twenty, twenty-five years, and we have several properties, ma- mainly shopping centers, you should see those, Whole Foods and I have Quest, Quest School and my office building, and Cedric Center, and, uh, also that's the center there, and Brian, that's Whole Hog there, so we have a lot of shopping centers, and I think if you would go around looking at the ones we've developed, we've done a pretty good job, and we always keep our units nice and clean, and that's what we wanna do. And I say that is because sometimes people say, well, they're gonna, some New York developer is gonna come in and build, and build this center, and then they'll be gone and not be there to, you know, to do anything about it if there's, if there's a problem. Well, we live in West Little Rock, and we have, my family is out here, my daughter's got a store in one of our developments right there, Pinnacle Creek, uh, the Companion's Dress Store, and we have a lot of interest in there. I've got two shopping centers there that I'm, 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 this is gonna be a good thing. I've had every tenant, I think just about every tenant in those two centers have told me, John, we want it, we need it, we need the extra traffic, you know, retail's not that good, we need to have people walking up, and we're gonna have a passageway there if they can walk up. And, uh, to get to our center so they can shop there and do this, and this is a type of infield that the city has always said, this is what we want, this is what we want. And so now they don't want it. But so, anyway, I, I just think that, uh, this talks about, you can see up here the Hamilton, it's a, it's a twenty-five to thirty, thirty million dollar investment, and so it's gonna be, you know, last year I came before the board and we were thinking about building an office warehouse, and so it was because of the traffic, it was right past the, the Murphy Oil deal, you know, and everybody was all concerned about the traffic then, and I understand that, and of course, it did get passed, and so I came in right after that, so there was a really lot of concern. So the office warehouse had twice as much traffic as this particular development has. So I, I said, well, what's, what can I do to be the least traffic generator? And Ernie said, well, you know, your apartment is about half what, what that was. So there's nothing else, basically, unless you go single-family, that you could put in there, and single-family is gonna be about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a unit after I get through, after I get through, if I did a development, and, and six years, it can't, it, it won't work. It just won't, will not work, and besides that, who wants to be located and build next to shopping centers? The city would have never approved that. If I went out there and said I wanted to get this zone residential, and, and it was office, they'd say, no, you can't do that. I know they do, that, because they're not gonna put residential. That's why it's zone, it's in the transition zone. That's what it means, transition between one heavier zoning, which is on the front, is your commercial, so we're transitioning between commercial and the residential on the north side and the, and the west side. So, and, and those two developments, as you'll see in a minute, when, uh, Ernie Ri- uh, when Frank Riggins gets up, are two hundred and three hundred feet away. They can't see us, they have to get on top of their house over there if we were with Mr. Wingfield's development, and they'd have to get on top of their house, and they'd still be, uh, to be able to see the top of our roof. So it's not something that they're gonna, I don't think see or hear or taste or touch or whatever you might wanna call it, we're, we're gonna be incognito, basically, to, to those people, and we're gonna be good neighbors, that's what we wanna be. I mean, we're, we've been good neighbors every time, if something happens, we wanna be good neighbors. And we, but, but also, the, there's a lot of people that are not here tonight, that are standing right here beside me, and they're saying, we need this. They say, we need it, and, 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 but they're, but they're not here, because, you know, most of the time when you're against something, you come out, but when you're for something, they say, I hope it gets passed, I hope, and that's what a lot of people told me, I hope this gets passed, John, we need this, it's a good thing for the city of Little Rock. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, uh, stop for just a second, I want Marcus Elliott to come forward, and, uh, he, he's an advocate for the public schools, and I wanna get his two cents in here.
Thank you, John. Football game's important, um, but, but tonight's important to me too. I'm, first, I'm a friend, uh, of John Reeves, and I, I vouch for him as a person, as a friend and our relationship over the years. Also, I'm, I live in the ranch, so I'm familiar with traffic, I'm familiar with that area. But I stand with him on the Hamilton for a couple of reasons. One, I think growth and progress in our city is important, but one of the main reasons it's important, Chairman, is, is for our young people and our schools. You know, it's my understanding that potentially three hundred thousand dollars a year in taxes will be paid from this project. For me, that's important, because schools are important to the growth of cities, they're important to crime, they're important to making a difference in lives. And I think this has a, an opportunity, not only to serve the purpose of, of growth in our city that's happening anyway, get people somewhere to live, but a byproduct is, we'll be able to support our public schools better. We're in the middle right now of a project where we gotta raise money so we can implement a football program that was taken away from the school district because of lack of revenues. Guess what? The revenue from this project would cover that program. Now, thank God, we've got some wonderful people that see vision and see the impact of our school systems on our young people, and they're stepping up and filling the gap. But this is a way we can meet the need of a growing city in addition to helping our young people. Everybody benefits. So, yeah, I live out there, so my traffic may increase a little bit, but the big picture is our young people are gonna benefit from revenues being driven from this project, I support it.
Thank you, Marcus. I'm gonna let Ernie Peters, um, come forward and talk about the traffic, and he'll do that right now.
Thank you, John. Chairman Berry and Commissioners, I'm Ernie Peters with Peters Associates Engineers. Most of you know me, I've been here before, uh, in fact, I've been in Little Rock for a lot of years and practiced in this area for as many years as I've been in Little Rock, which is over thirty. But it's my pleasure tonight to, or this afternoon, to speak to you and try to answer any questions you may have concerning this development relative to traffic. As John has indicated, uh, residential, single-family development on this track is not practical. Uh, it's not a good location for that. If he were to develop it as single-family, he likely could not market it because of the infrastructure and land costs that he would have to recover. But as he also indicated, he had been before this board, uh, some time ago with a office warehouse development, and one of the reasons that it drew opposition, uh, was because of, uh, the traffic generation associated with it. So we began to look at what alternate land uses could be considered and be practical and could allow John to develop this property and, uh, have a high and, and good use of it. And we came to the conclusion that multifamily is a very good fit, it fits into that transition area, transition from the commercial or office to residential areas with multifamily, and it generates, uh, uh, roughly half what the, uh, alternative office warehouse development could generate. Now, Mr. Van Ahadi, I appreciate his presentation, and he presented to you a summary of the trip generation associated with that, uh, possible combination of single-family and, uh, the plant, the, the existing PRD development. And it's true that on a daily basis, uh, that traffic would generate, that, that use would generate about half what these apartments would, eight hundred and sixty versus sixteen hundred or so. But what, uh, Mr. Van Ahadi did not point out is that the difference in trip generation during the peak hours, when you compare those two, it was only an increase of, uh, about twenty cars in the AM peak hour combined entering and exiting, and an increase of only about thirty cars in the PM peak hour combined entering and exiting. Those are respectively twenty cars during an hour in the AM peak hour, about one additional vehicle every three minutes, and during the PM peak hour, an increase of about thirty, about, uh, two additional vehicles per minute during the PM peak hour. So the difference is not much. I appreciate Mr. Van Ahadi's analysis, however, uh, you may not have recognized that in his data, his turning movement count data was dated two thousand and fourteen, that preceded the opening of La Marche, which has diverted a lot of traffic, uh, from this intersection. Uh, our analysis and all that we did in our analysis report that we've present, presented and provided to the city included updated turning movement counts at this intersection of Taylor Loop. And our findings are that, uh, the queuing would not be anything like he depicted in the simulation model. We used the city's existing signal timing in that Highway 10 corridor, and as Mr. Van Ahadi pointed out, it is a coordinated system, so we locked in the timing, we added to the existing volumes that we counted recently for the intersection, not using the two thousand and fourteen data, but, but two thousand and seventeen data. We added to that the full build of this, uh, two hundred and fifty units of apartments, and we do not see the queuing that he's depicted there. We see, uh, the worst case that five or six vehicles might queue up on the north leg, but I point out that that is on-site, that's on that private street that is opposite Taylor Loop, and so if any congestion manifests itself, it does so on-site, it does not negatively impact, uh, the operation of the intersection. Uh, I could talk a lot more about traffic, but we are somewhat limited on time, and there are others that wanna speak. I'd be glad to answer any questions now or later, should there be any, um, but otherwise, I'll defer to our, our next speaker. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Ernie, I appreciate that presentation, and now I'm gonna let Frank Riggins with Craft and Toll talk about, um, how we're gonna talk about the water and drainage and all that.
Thank you, John. You're welcome. I'm Frank Riggins with Craft and Toll Engineers, we are the civil engineer for, uh, the Hamilton Apartments. Ms. James made a, a great presentation and, and covered a lot of, uh, the, the territory that I was gonna present to you, just concerning the quantitative data about the project. There's a couple of other, uh, things I do want to, to touch on, uh, if we could, yes, bring up this site plan here. One of the things I wanted to, to say was, uh, the building and the parking, uh, combined, uh, represent about, uh, fifty-six percent coverage to the site, that leaves about forty-four percent of open space. Uh, we are, uh, preserving a forty-one foot undisturbed buffer along, uh, our west boundary, uh, adjacent to Mr. Wingfield's, uh, development, uh, to the west. Uh, we are also, uh, not proposing to do any work in the floodway, which is that, uh, in and of itself is a, is a unpreserved, uh, buffer then, uh, against, uh, those houses to the north along Pinnacle Valley, uh, Drive, so I wanted to, uh, bring that to your, uh, your attention. Um, one of the things I also wanted to touch on, uh, were the, were the sightlines, uh, in and from, uh, the site. Uh, if we could have that slide, please, it shows those sections cut through the site. Uh, here's one, uh, looking from, uh, our development, uh, to the west, to Mr. Wingfield's property. Uh, this represents, uh, if you were standing on the top floor, uh, of our building, uh, looking over a forty-foot obstacle, uh, there are some very mature specimens, uh, some dense growth there in that undisturbed buffer, uh, and the house, uh, would have to be approximately forty feet tall to be able to see the backside of that house, vice versa. Uh, the house then, uh, would have a, have an obstructed view of our project as well. Looking to the north, the same situation, uh, really applies. Uh, looking at those houses that are existing across the creek over there, uh, over the top of a forty-foot obstacle, the houses, again, would have to be thirty or forty feet tall before there was any visibility from the house to the project or from the project over to the house. So I wanna bring that to your, your attention as well. Uh, I also wanna talk about drainage. Uh, we are, of course, uh, going to abide by the law as it pertains to drainage and detention for the site. Uh, there's been a, a lot of, uh, uh, talk about flooding issues, certainly they're on everyone's mind with what's going on in Houston, uh, what even happened in Little Rock on, on April the thirtieth. Uh, this project, uh, is, uh, will provide for, as we are required to, uh, by the city, and they are the authority having jurisdiction over this project. We will absolutely, uh, abide by their requirements pertaining to drainage, uh, and detention storage. As you know, we'll have to do the calculations, we'll have to do the design, we'll have to provide them with documentation, uh, to show and, and, and prove that this is what we're going to do, that, uh, we're gonna be providing for detention on our site, and we are not, uh, going to be exacerbating any, uh, flooding conditions, uh, along the, uh, the creek. We have to do this in order to get a building permit. We submit these documents, uh, to the city, they give it a very intense review before we can, uh, get the building permit. Uh, so anyway, I wanted to, uh, just to make that, uh, make you aware of that.
Thank you, Frank.
Okay. Thanks, John.
Sissy?
I'm gonna, uh, we got one of our next-door neighbors that was, had a concern with the drainage, uh, issue, and I want to have, uh, introduce Sissy Brandon, and she wanted, wants to, uh, talk to you about that.
Chairman Berry, Vice Chairman Bubba, Planning Commission members. I'm pre- I'm, my name is Sissy Brandon, Elizabeth Brandon, and I'm president of Doug Brandon Properties, which owns Pinnacle Valley Shopping Center, a twenty-three thousand square foot retail center located at fourteen thousand seven hundred Cantrell Road. Pinnacle Valley Plaza has a common boundary with the land, which is the subject of the rezoning application we're considering today. Our property has been managed by Coell Banker Hathaway Group for over ten years, and Jim Hathaway of that firm has provided professional advice to us regarding this application. After learning about the application, we had multiple questions concerning the possible negative impact on our property. In early June, I wrote a letter to Donna James expressing those concerns, which included draining, drainage issues, fencing, landscape screening, and passageway. A few weeks later, the applicant initiated dialogue with me and my advisor, Jim Hathaway. Through that dialogue, the applicant satisfactorily addressed each of our concerns. As a result, Doug Brandon Properties is no longer opposed to this rezoning application. We now believe the proposed development will be of benefit to our tenants. I'm a Farmer Planning Commission member, and I'm very aware of the issues that this body faces on a regular basis. I served with Mr. Berry a few years back. Thank you for taking my remarks into consideration, I appreciate you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ms. Brandon. I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. We, we have thirty-three seconds left.
Chris Stewart on behalf of Reese Development and the Hamilton, uh, appreciate you guys letting us be here today, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, and ladies. I would just like to say the great thing about your position is you're an independent body, you are the arbitrator, you're not elected, you do not have constituents. Facts and reason is all that matters. You cannot be capricious, and you may not be arbitrary, it is the facts in this case which shall prevail, and it'll, and, and, in this matter, that is all, that is in this case. There will always be a NIMBY argument, always. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, sorry, I had two cards who wanted to speak, Jean Everly and Paul Burchard, and, uh, time was up, so we're gonna move on to, uh, those who wish to speak. So we're gonna move on to those who wish to speak against. I want to again remind those who did sign cards that we have up over eighteen cards, and we have twenty minutes. So keep that in mind to be expeditious. I'm sure there'd be a lot of commonality in things said, and if you don't want to speak, certainly give up your time. So with that in mind, let's begin. Vice Chair, who's who's up to bat first? We have Enos Jones.
Good afternoon, Chairman, and members of the Commission. My name is Enos Jones, and I'm gonna start from the very beginning of when I first, in two thousand and thirteen, I purchased two-point-six-eight acres out there along Isom Creek. And the property that he has filled in used to be, I guess, a floodway. It was actually level ground, lower ground. And his attorney said something that was key, and I made a note of it. He said the facts. The number-one fact is he did not get a permit to fill that floodway. And foundation is key. Now, in two thousand and fifteen, when I submitted all of my applications for permit before I could put a fork in the ground out there, it had to be approved by the Planning Commission and everything. And from my understanding, he he did not get a proper permit to fill that floodway. I've got some photos of the damage that is being caused by some of the water that's being pushed from the buildup, from where he built up that floodway. That post right there was approximately about twenty feet away from the edge of the creek is sitting in the creek bank now. That's another post. That's a picture of his, the opposite side. As you can see, there's no erosion on that side of the creek. That's another point on the other opposite side of the creek. If you keep going, that right there is some of the field. This right here is about a two-foot drop on the back part of that property where washout, where I had built up topsoil and field. It's about a two-foot drop from that concrete slab there. The next photo is a lot of what is filled in out there, concrete blocks and things of that nature, and the foundation is 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 something that's important. And if the foundation is crooked and warped, everything that goes up is gonna be crooked and warped. And that's, I'm finished with my presentation.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Robert Trammell? Good afternoon. My name's Robert Trammell, and I live in the Pinnacle Valley Court Development, and I'm the Property Owner Association President. I've been asked to speak to you on behalf of our residents, as well as the residents of several other subdivisions in this area. Over the last twenty years or so, the city planners have been very consistent in requiring all residential developments along this corridor or the residential areas to be limited to detached, single-family structures. This proposed development would be a radical departure from this policy, and I think it would undermine the trust that hundreds of property owners have in the city leaders. Our concerns lie in three areas. Number one, roads and traffic signals, and I think the engineer covered the traffic signals pretty thoroughly. But the roads, in two thousand and twelve, the city planners issued a letter that their intent was for Pinnacle Valley Drive, where most of us live, to be allowed to develop so that it could retain its country lane feel. It would be improved and widened to be two-lane road with dual bike lanes. They did not intend for it to become four lanes or to keep it from and to keep it from becoming a main traffic artery. This development would help to undermine, I think, this plan. Number two, infrastructure. The water lines, sewer lines, electrical grid were designated for suburban development, not high-density urban projects. Why not stick with the current policies that were very wisely developed over a lot of years so as to not overwhelm the infrastructure? Sure, go ahead and develop the property, but follow the existing guidelines that all the other developers have been made to follow over the last fifteen to twenty years. And then thirdly, flooding and drainage issues. And a little bit about what Enos has talked about, but I want to go over some things. All the subdivisions developed that I mentioned previously had strict density limits placed on the developers who that you addressed, I think it's four or five units per acre, who also were required to build retention ponds. And also, when you build single-family houses, you know, they're proposing, his engineers said they would have about fifty-four to fifty-five percent of it hard surfaces. Our residential areas are just a very few percent. But even in spite of all that, we've had drainage issues out there. And let's see, let me find my place. I mentioned previously, they had strict density limits placed on the developer, who also required to build retention ponds and to control water runoff after heavy rains. In spite of the city's efforts to limit water runoff, Pinnacle Valley Drive has flooded several times in the last few years, and is getting worse as this area has developed. The spring, after a particularly heavy rain, it was underwater for several hours and several and severe erosion undermined the roadway. Fortunately, the city recently completed physical improvements to Pinnacle Valley Drive, and they've taken care of most of these issues. But we believe that this high-density project and lack of a lot of retentive ponds, they had one small one, I think, in their plan, and then there's gonna be more dredging required to build this project will further worsen our flooding problems. In summary, the city has planned and zoned this area for suburban development. This proposed development is high-density urban development. Mr. Reese himself admitted that his proposed development was being designed to appeal to people attracted to high-density urban lifestyles. Urban projects are fine for areas that can accommodate high-density traffic, high-infrastructure demands, and areas free from flooding issues, but not for this area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I am Mindy Morrell, representing the Pleasant Valley Neighborhood Association, and I could guesstimate it's about two-hundred-and-fifty acres, and we have about two-hundred-and-forty households. So the quick math is obviously about a household per acre. So I'm sort of reiterating what Donna said about urban or just density issues, and this would put about twenty-five to twenty-six households per acre. The other, I would like to say, I think I can safely say that we are not against multifamily residential development. We just don't think that this is the space for it. It is transitional, and I'm really, we want you to stick with a low-density transitional planning and keep us, keep the master plan, as we all have this on in force. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Kelton Brown, Jr., please.
My name is Kelton Brown. I'm a land developer in Little Rock, and I've been out on Highway ten developing property for thirty-something years. I've seen the flooding. I've done extensive drainage on Highway ten. This project will do nothing more than flood Pinnacle Valley Road, they're calling it Drive, it's not Pinnacle, Pinnacle Valley Road. Just since the April thirtieth flood, we've had other floods that came through, and we had stalled cars on Pinnacle Valley Road that couldn't get out. Stalled them out, they had to tow them away. So this will not do any good for Pinnacle Valley Road at all. It will throw water back on Pinnacle Valley Road, and they can't drop through. And since they believe that the Highway ten widening will be done within five, six years, I worked on Highway ten widening from the beginning, and it was thirty-five years ago. Okay? Thirty-five years ago. It took years to happen. So if we believe that the highway department is gonna buy more property and widen Highway ten to, I guess, three lanes each way in ten years, don't believe it, it probably won't happen. It will cost a lot of money. So I think it shouldn't happen, not not an apartment complex in there. He ought to go out to the ranch. He has friends out the ranch that own property. Be a good location. I'll be all for it. That's my word.
Thank you. Celia Martin, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Celia Martin. I live on Canterbury Court in Westchester, which is directly off of Taylor Loop to the west, just about a block from the intersection. I too, actually, I have a house in one of Mr. Brown's developments. I'm sorry, I've lost my mind here. At any rate, I've been a part of this project and proposal and all the everything since two thousand, since nineteen eighty-eight is when we purchased our property. We moved out there in nineteen eighty-nine, when Taylor Loop Road was literally an asphalt-covered lane with grass shoulders on it. Hinson Road had not been connected. Rawling Road was on the, you know, on the plans, but it certainly had not been there. There was a stop sign at Taylor Loop and Highway ten. So you can imagine the development that we have seen. When we purchased that property, we were fully aware that development was going to come come about. We were involved in the zoning of Harvest Foods, which is now an Easter Seal facility, and all of that. And it was during that time that the Highway ten overlay development design, I can't even remember all the words for it. But at any rate, when a large group of citizens spent a considerable amount of time trying to determine how they were going to provide for a cohesive way to provide can to provide continued beauty and development all the way out Highway ten to the west. After all, that's one of the most beautiful areas that you can exit the city from. I used to think, oh, boy, when I got to just below where Walton Heights comes in, and you go around that curve, and you just felt yourself go, ah, it's peaceful. Well, I assure you, it's not peaceful now. But I passed out to you what the DOD is for Highway ten says, and one of the purposes of it was to provide a transition from the heavy traffic and and heavy development into a more of a suburban area. And I hope that you will continue to think about that as you make decisions on developments that are this dense. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Keith Wingfield, please.
Good afternoon, members of the Commission, and Chairman Berry, Vice Chairman Bubas. My name is Keith Wingfield. I am the managing member of Isen Creek Development LLC, and we are the developers of the newly-open Village at Isen Creek. We started our first houses a couple of weeks ago. We are immediately due west of this proposed development, and we have a contiguous property line. Our eastern line is the western line of Mr. Reese's development. I'm not normally here speaking against development. It's very unusual for me, and and it's a little bit difficult for me to do that. But I'm in here today in opposition approval of these apartments, primarily because this is the wrong place. This is simply the wrong place. This land is at least almost half of it zoned for single-family R-two homes. And in fact, I had the four-and-a-half acres that he has in this project under contract to actually join to our subdivision. So any thought that it could not be developed into R-two property is not true. What happened is my offer expired, and I didn't have all my FEMA floodway ducts in a row yet because we didn't know if we were gonna be able to get that approval. And we have subsequently received that approval, and if you haven't driven out there, you need to see the size of what you have to develop. And the length of the bridge that we built over Isen Creek is a hundred-and-ten mill feet long, and a very, very wide stream bed now to protect against the flooding. So that property can be developed in in R-two, and it's, this is not an urban area. This is not an urban area that would should ever be, and I know I'm repeating this a little bit, but the Highway ten corridor was was developed so this would maintain a suburban feel. And a four-story apartment building in this location is is not suburban at all. I want to tell you that in the land use plan, if if it maintained the traffic of a single-family subdivision, then that's about ten trips a day per home. And if we had developed it, we would have built on this four-and-a-half-acre tract about sixteen homes. And at a hundred, sixteen homes at ten trips a day, that's a hundred-and-sixty trips per day. Now, you compare that to lesser trips for multifamily, seven trips per day, but on this same four-and-a-half acres, he would build ninety-six apartments, and that's six-hundred-and-seventy-two trips per day. So that is more than four times the number of trips that this land is zoned for. And I think you need to consider that. I drive this area all the time, and I don't know how what the accident issues are out there right now, but that intersection at Taylor Loop is one that's just waiting for fatality because it is dangerous. I think you need to stick to the scenic corridor plan. This, it it hasn't worked perfectly, but it's worked pretty well. We do have the commercial clusters, but behind those commercial clusters, you need the support of housing. And there are many zoned areas for multifamily in this corridor, and I'm I'm sure it will be a very fine development. I'm not questioning that at all, but I would tell you that it's not the right place. It needs to pick it up and take it and put it somewhere else. This is simply a classic case of upzoning. Bought a piece of property, zoned residential. And, you know, you can buy a property that's zoned residential pretty inexpensively, and then you can take it and you convert it to something else, and it should bring a higher dollar value. And I'm telling you that the 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 plan is well-thought-out, it's purposeful, and it protects all these hundreds of single-family homeowners all around Highway ten, including the forty-eight that we plan to have in their homes here in a very short period of time. The last thing I want to say is about the floodway. I had the, I have the privilege of having a son that is a civil engineer, and he is what I consider to be a very bright individual, and he got to do my floodway analysis. And he's since now taken a lot of coursework to become what I think is an expert on it. So and he lets me know that he's an expert and how dumb I am about it. But what I have done by listening to him is understand how floodways work. There is very little room between the northern side of Mr. Reese's property and Pinnacle Valley Road to construct the type of floodway improvements without encroaching on either Mr. Enos's property or taking up a sizable portion of the planned property. Now, they talk about following the rules, but I can tell you right now that that hasn't happened on that piece, and and I think they've told us that there's been some illegal dumping out there, where people have come in there and dumped concrete blocks and and bricks and and things like that, and I understand that. But I've got photos here from the pageant system that shows the parking area behind Senor Tequila is actually built in the floodway. So I'll pass those out. So I'll pass those out. Now, that may not have happened during the time of Senor Tequila because that floodway, guess what? They, they modify those maps all the time, and it's gotten larger since the, the time back in two thousand and five or so. There's a new two thousand and fifteen, and it keeps getting larger and larger. So it's a serious issue, and it's already causing flooding on Pinnacle Valley Road. So I just don't think this is a good development for this particular site. I'm sure it would be good somewhere else, but with that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you. Okay. Chris Stewart. Nick Alsop.
My name's Nick Alsop, and I'm actually the president of the Pinnacle Valley Neighborhood Association that Mindy Morell was representing before you. And I just wanted to state that of the two hundred and forty houses that live in that area, none of them have an interest in seeing a, an apartment, four-story apartment developed in this area, and we would appreciate seeing it developed in other areas in the city. There are many other places where this would be appropriate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ken Harrison. Okay, thank you. Richard Stoker. Barbara Lee. Mac Faulkner. Esmeralda Rodriguez. Kathleen Olson.
Kathleen Olson, representing the Legal Women Voters of Pulaski County. And this, this evening, there were a number of people that talked about the plans and how it was developed. I was on the planning commission also, served for six years at one time with Craig. And over and over again, we would have people, as you all do, come to you and say, I bought a house, I looked at the plans, I learned what was around it, I still bought my house. Then they find out that somebody buys some property, and they want to do something different than what they thought was going to be happening. You have got to enforce the trust that people should have in the planning of this city. And I would urge you, for all the reasons that were discussed, to please deny this request. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all for those comments. Now, we're going to open up for Commissioners to have questions and comments. So with that, Commissioners. Mr. Bubas.
Yes, I have a few questions for staff, probably engineering-type questions, so if y'all are ready. But I'd like to talk about the, the flood issue, the washout issue, some of these water flow issues. These, to me, are extremely critical issues that, if they cause damage to other property owners that are nearby, that are critical. So I'd like to hear your comments on that. Is it, have the plans properly accounted for the water flow?
He is providing the required stormwater detention systems. They're located adjacent to the floodway on the northeastern part of the site is a detention area, and there's a second discharge point over to the far western side of the site. Both discharge points are directly into Isom Creek, so it's not into somebody's backyard or another conveyance going through somebody's property, other than it's going right into the creek. There, there was, I heard some folks speak, that there was a very, very significant storm event in April this year. We'd estimate in some parts of town, including this part of town, it was around a fifty-year storm based on gauge data from the wastewater utility and intensities that we occurred. So, so there was a significant storm. I, I didn't, I can't speak to flooding on Pinnacle Road. I, I don't, that could have happened. A lot of our streets went underwater for a brief time during that storm event.
Is it your opinion that this development will negatively impact the flooding in the area, or is the detention pond appropriate for that issue?
We don't have a final design, but we've been assured that their stormwater system will meet the ordinance, so they are, intend in every way to meet the city standard. Our objection really has been about the number of units and the traffic and the access through the shopping center from Public Works perspective.
Okay, move on to my questions related to, to some of the traffic issues. There, Mr. Peters has suggested that during the peak hours of traffic, which is obviously most critical, that we have a impact of twenty cars during AM rush hour and thirty cars during the PM rush hour. Are, are those numbers accurate, or do you disagree with his analysis?
I think the main disagreement, disagreement between us and Ernie is basically the trip distribution. According to Ernie's trip distribution, you have a fifty-fifty split from the new development, basically fifty percent going left towards the city, towards downtown area, fifty going away, you know, to the west. And I can definitely tell where they're going. You know, trip distribution is kind of a judgment. You guys can also estimate is fifty percent, you know, or fifty percent of the traffic going towards town and fifty going away towards the west of Little Rock area. We think that probably sixty to seventy percent are probably going to come towards the town. So when you change the tip, trip distribution numbers, you can, you know, adjust the traffic numbers.
So, in your opinion, so he's estimating twenty cars during the AM rush hour? So if that were, you're saying it should, instead of being fifty-fifty, it should have been, say, seventy-five percent? So that would be maybe thirty to forty cars during?
That would be reasonable. Also, the other thing is, Ernie said that, you know, our numbers are old. And if I look at his study, actually, we showed westbound left turns during AM of three hundred and seventy-five, and is, you know, is three fifty-five. So three seventy-five versus three fifty-five.
Is that for the, what period of time was that for? Because I, I thought I, I wrote down in my notes twenty.
For the morning.
For the whole morning or during rush hour?
I'm talking about the westbound left turns only. The, the traffic coming from the development, you have a total of eighty-seven left turns during the AM peak hour.
Eighty-seven left turns during the AM peak hour, coming from the apartments?
Yes, these are Ernie's numbers with the existing traffic and added, you know, projected traffic.
So eighty-seven vehicles during the AM peak hour and during the evening peak hour?
Evening, they're showing seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight. Seventy-eight?
And if you note, you know, they also have eighty-four right turns in the AM peak hour, seventy-six right turns during.
You're saying about another half of those right turns could have been left turns?
That's my.
That's your opinion, right? Okay. So you're thinking it could be as upwards of one hundred and forty left turns, something like that, just throwing the numbers around?
Yeah, the problem is with traffic, it's not like, you know, weighing something. You get exact measurement, you have to use your judgment, and that's where we disagree. I'm not saying that Ernie's wrong, I'm not saying that I'm right, but based on the, the general, you know, trips, the pattern, most of the traffic is going to probably turn left.
I would agree with that. That seems logical.
Exactly.
Is it okay if we hear Ernie's response? Okay. I'd like to, we need to really know what, what we're voting on here as far as traffic.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Bubas. Just to offer a little bit of clarification, the, the twenty and the thirty vehicles that I referenced earlier were an increase compared to the single-family and PCD development versus what is being proposed. That, that did not represent the total traffic. Let me comment a little bit further about the directional distribution, and Mr. Benahati is correct that that matters. And he's also correct that it's a judgment call what direction those vehicles might come and go. With all the additional school traffic out to the west and the home to, to school trips, home to work trips, what we base the fifty-fifty, more or less, percent distribution, the left turns versus the right turns on, was what the existing traffic patterns are out there.
Okay.
And surprisingly, it's almost a fifty-fifty split in the AM peak hour. Eastbound versus westbound. The other thing I'd like to point out is that that really doesn't matter a whole lot because of the signal phasing that the city has. They have split phasing there where all of the northbound goes at one time, it stops, all of the southbound goes at a different time. So except for those vehicles that might be coming out of the Walgreens area or out of this development area and turning right and could do so in a gap in the traffic, the, the timing that is allowed for the north side would all be allocated to whatever the vehicle movement is, whether it's left turn, right turn, or straight through. So what direction they turn, except for those that can turn right freely, freely.
As long as they're coming south.
Don't, don't matter. So if there's further question on traffic that I can answer, I'd be glad to.
I have a question for staff on that. So he's, he's estimating that as an increase over single-family residential as he estimates twenty in the AM peak hour and thirty in the PM peak hour over single-family residential? If what I'm hearing, if the, I guess the, the way they turn is different from that ratio, it might, could be thirty to forty-five. Do you agree with his analysis on that? Is that in the correct ballpark?
Yeah, it depends on how we, you know, allot the distribution.
But just to be clear, that would be an increase over single-family residential, somewhere in the range of thirty cars in the morning or less, twenty to forty, say? And in the PM hour, somewhere around forty-five in that range, an increase? Okay, so we're looking at about a car every two minutes there for thirty cars in the morning? Okay. I think I'll let, let some other Commissioners ask a few questions.
Okay, sure thing. Commissioner Cox.
Yes, actually, I, you know, I've commented about the traffic through this area before. Certainly, it is a problem, particularly on the, over, as I always said before, the overlap of the turning into the shopping centers in Jerry Drive. I've always referenced that before, and I, I do live in, I've traveled this every day myself, living, I live off Henson's, very familiar with this area and dealing with the traffic there. So it is a very considerable problem, there is no doubt about that. That being said, I will say, back in April, March and April, this commission and subsequently the board had approved a development out at the ranch, which, when you speak of traffic, there was a development for the Bank of the Ozarks that's going to include their headquarters, a conference center, a hotel, restaurant, two different retail office buildings, three levels each, an office building, three level, and two office buildings that are four levels. And that planned development is going to have approximately seven hundred and eighteen thousand square feet with allocated parking spaces of one thousand five hundred and twenty-five spaces compared to the four forty-two spaces here or three and a half times as much. So actually, that development itself, not to say that we're not, you know, this commission all approved that development, but that development, that's going to cause the traffic, not this one. Traffic's coming regardless. So it's not this that's causing the traffic. Traffic's going to be going because the, the new development's coming to the ranch. And so I think that, you know, the focus is not what this is going to do, it's more of what's going to be occurring, you know, one point nine miles further out to the west. And then obviously, you're going to have more ensuing development, as we know, continuing going out west, because in Little Rock, the only area of development that we have available is going to the west, where landlocked, obviously, can't go north. To the east, we're pretty well as far as we can go there. We're near the south borders, doing much, pretty much is going to the west as the area of growth, long-term in the city, which obviously, you know, we have witnessed that over the last twenty, twenty-five years, that's been occurring. So, you know, I think, you know, you look at all the different issues, certainly the traffic is the focus, but I think the traffic alone on this site should not preclude its development because further development to the west is where the traffic is going to be generated. Certainly, there is other roads, alternatives, trying to look at where do we turn off, you know, people going up and down Rawling. Rawling's been improved, you know, in the last few years. Certainly, Schnaw Parkway, more people using that as well. So, you know, people, instead of turning east, going on Cantor, they may be going up Rawling, they may be going further out to La Marsha, going up the Parkway. You know, so I look at this, the traffic at this point is not going to be the generator as much as that previous development that was approved. But that being said, I, I support this project. I think, as Mr. Elliott pointed out, I think it's, it is good growth that, for development of the city, that does support the infield within the city as well as does support our public school system as well. So I would certainly urge support of this project.
Thank you, Commissioner Cox. Other Commissioners? Commissioner May.
Let's get back to why we're here, whether we're on building apartment. I'll defer that traffic's only increased. That's Markham and the University twenty years from now, whether this gets built or not. And I can't tell you how many times I've voted against apartment complexes on Bowman Road. I told Mr. Reese, I said, I think I misled him first on because I said, I'm the happiest guy in Little Rock to think on the planning commission, I'm not going to have to vote against another apartment complex on Bowman Road with their two thousand or however many there are out there. But unlike my friend, Mr. Keith over there, this is the wrong place for this thing. Let's not get too many apartments and start there. There's land to the west where this ought to go, and I'm like Mr. Wingfield. I ain't real smart, but traffic's going to go up whether this thing is built or not. But just don't hurry it along.
Thank you, Commissioner May. Commissioner Leahy, can you get it?
Yeah, I hit the button that time. Long about the time Ms. Martin purchased her property out there in, in Westchester is the time they started a strip mall there across from Westchester and on Highway ten. Now, I remember being hired by the people that were in that strip mall to develop that land past them, which is where this project is now, into a parking lot. And they still had the water and all that kind of stuff. And I don't know exactly what happened, why it got derailed and it didn't develop it. But I'm sure that some of those people out there hadn't have been opposed to a parking lot, that they'd have a parking lot in there now, and you wouldn't be worried about this. Now, on the traffic, I don't worry about traffic, but most of those people that's going to be occupying this apartment complex won't even have cars. And I know people in this part of the world are, it's hard to believe that they don't have cars. But I used to go into Washington DC and that part of the world up there quite often and stayed a week or two weeks or three weeks at a time. And there's a lot of people that do, do not have cars. They walk. And they walk everywhere they go. We had a group of them in Little Rock come down for a convention, and they wanted to know where they could go eat breakfast besides us down at the market. And I said, well, there's a Wendy's about nine blocks away, and ladies there like to pass out, thinking those young girls would walk nine blocks. That girl said, we don't even have a car.
Commissioner Leahy, can we kind of get some direction here?
All right, but I'm trying to, what I'm trying to say is that I don't think that traffic's going to be a big, be a big problem because that, those people are not going to have cars. They're going to walk.
Okay, okay.
And if, and if people have been opposed to it, when you, your subdivision's built out there, would you be out there now? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Leahy. Other Commissioners? We, we are Citizens Commission too, so we reflect different perspectives.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going to go back to the traffic. I'm glad you're still up here. I'm glad you're still up here, so I'm gonna beat this horse to death. I appreciate you guys' patience, but I wanna know all the facts. I think you guys need or deserve that. So, um, when you said, when we did that range of additional vehicles, was that for the whole ten acres being single-family residential? Or was that with, cause half of it's single-family, the other half could be commercial? So was your analysis with the whole site as single-family? If that's, if that's correct, that analysis might be?
That, that difference is the net difference between if the property were to develop a combination of single-family and PCD for the entire eleven acres as it's currently zoned versus as it's being proposed as multifamily.
Okay, so half of it as residential and then the other half as PCD?
Roughly half.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, apartments are always, always difficult and, um, nobody wants them next door. And I, I'll just walk you through kinda my analysis when I look at these issues. Um, one of the first things I look for is negative or adverse impacts, that's why we've been talking about flood a lot. And, uh, if I could get a little help from Walter, if you could, um, go to the slide that the applicant presented the final Hamilton, and then I wanna come back to this one. Um, the final Hamilton presentation. But there on, on this one, you can, you can see, uh, the buffer. If you'll flip through that to the aerial. Um, I think it kinda shows the buffer a little bit better, right there, back one. Perfect. Okay, so if, if you'll, if you can look at this drawing here, I think it shows what I like to see on, on buffer. So there to the north, we have a, a large amount of buffer and green space basically caused by the creek and the flood area there. And we have got one home there that's impacted to the north and possibly, I guess, one there we can see on the other one. Uh, to the west, I'm, I'm sure we're gonna have, how many homes, Mr. Wingfield, built on? How many right there just adjacent to the property line do you, do you propose? Do you think twenty?
Well, that one street adjacent to it will have twenty houses around it.
Okay, so we're looking at around maybe twenty-two to, in, less than twenty-five homes that are immediately impacted with that buffer. Um, so tha- that's one of the factors that I, I like to look at is how many homes are gonna be touched, how many homes are gonna be impacted. In this case, we've seen a lot where there is an entire residential area surrounding the multifamily project. Um, we don't see that here. On the south side, we have commercial property that the owners of that are in favor of this development. So this is one of the critical issues because again, almost every multifamily deal that we look at, um, people don't like them, their neighbors don't like them. So the immediate impact to this compared to some of the other ones is minimal, is what I would s- suggest. Um, one of the other factors I, I like to look at, um, again, is traffic. We've, we've talked about that quite a bit. I think with part of this potentially being developed as, as office.
No.
In. Yes, ma'am, but alternatively, and if, if you can, thank you, thanks. Alternatively, some of the other proposals have been office warehouse for some of the PCD portion of this property. Um, residential, obviously there to the west. So some of the traffic, the density issues there with office or other retail developments that could happen in that PCD could potentially be greater traffic, um, issues there. And a, a, another thing with traffic, I think we need to look at here, if we're going to have traffic, we want it at a light. And I, I know that having a light, having traffic at an intersection like this one is a problem, but I would rather have traffic at an intersection than have it where they're just pulling out. Um, those are where we have a lot of accidents. So having traffic at an intersection is preferable to having it where there's not an intersection. So, uh, and I, I believe that the, with, with the staff and the experts here saying that the impact on traffic is gonna be around twenty to thirty cars additionally in the AM and, uh, you know, around forty in the PM, I don't think that is enough to prevent this application from moving forward. Uh, I will also say that if we don't approve residential property in this city, they're gonna live elsewhere. They're gonna go and live in Malmell, they're gonna go live in Bryant, and then they're gonna spend their money in Bryant. All of those tax dollars are gonna go to other cities. When they go shopping, they don't, you shop at Kroger down the street and all those tax dollars will come to Little Rock. And, um, for those reasons, I'm gonna be supporting this. I do sympathize with the community and I understand this was a very hard one for me. Went back and forth on these issues and wanted to make sure we had the facts. So I apologize if we've upset you tonight, we do appreciate your time.
Mr. Finney.
Um, Commissioner Bubba's, uh, actually went over a lot of the things that, that was on my mind, but I have to say, uh, while I really, really, um, think that this is, is an attractive development and I know that multifamily is, is necessary, I can't just, uh, forget the neighborhoods. And I think that we need to consider that. I think that, um, people, um, that their property, that they could be affected by this, that the new development that's going in can be affected by this. And I'm a residential realtor and I cannot, um, I cannot, um, look over that. So, um, John, I appreciate what you're trying to do and, and I hope you can get it done, but I will have to vote against this.
Now the commissioners, uh, Commissioner Hamilton.
Just so we can kinda revisit the traffic patterns, th- there was a slide, I think, that actually shows uh, the, the entry points and exit points of the property. Could, could we go back to that, to look at that, cause I, so that folks can see how that traffic pattern looks? I think there was some slide, it was a slide just before the one that you looked at, Alan. Yeah, that's it, I think that's it. Okay. I did schedule, yeah. Yeah, okay. So, uh, and Commissioner Leahy, I'll have to disagree with you. I think that each adult in, uh, this facility probably will have a car, so I don't, I don't think we got a scenario here where folks are gonna be walking, but. So, I mean, so there's no question that the traffic's gonna be impacted. Uh, this is a tough one for me, this is a struggle because, uh, from a, um, um, a living standpoint, you know, people want to live where people want to live. And there's no question, this is an area of town that people wanna live. Uh, the amenities are certainly there, um, access to schools, you know, the reasons that people pick this area is why people live here. So, so I applaud the, uh, development that's being designed here because I think everyone should have an opportunity to live in areas of our city. I also agree that, you know, from a tax base, that we do have to continue to find ways to keep people in this city. Um, but I do struggle certainly with the residents that are currently there. I think that we have to look at, um, you know, the impact to those that are there, those that are coming in. So I'm, I'm struggling with this, I haven't decided which way I'm gonna vote this evening. I, I, I can see benefits both ways, but again, I just wanted to make sure it's very clear, you know, how the traffic patterns are there, cause that is of concern. Certainly the amount of traffic that's gonna be in that area. It sounds like all of the other issues from, um, staff have been met. But again, I think this is one that we've really gotta consider and it's gonna continue to come to us.
Commissioner Latour.
I call a question.
I had some comments too, you know? And, and, and I won't move for the, the call of the question until I make some comments.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. Everyone had their chance. Would you like to say something though, before we call the question? I agree, we need to come to a close. Uh, and, uh, for the sake of time, uh, I, I do wanna say something, uh, before that and Walter, go ahead and pull this up, uh, because as, as Commissioner May says, this, this, this application really needs to turn on the merits of this site application and nothing else. However, what I, what I hear, and we continue to hear with these very unhappy battles out here is, is a narrative which I think is very incomplete for our current situation. And, um, and what I hear is we have a Highway ten corridor plan. We need to stick to it, uh, we're entrusted, uh, to do that, although we, city planners were entrusted to do some other things which I will comment on. This Highway ten corridor plan, which was a good plan, the design standards are still very valid. The land use, uh, prescribed in it are dated. And, uh, this corridor plan, I believe, um, was done in nineteen eighties. And, you know, the, I'm, I'm starting a conversation heart to heart because I don't think the leadership in City Hall really wants to own this. But the Highway ten corridor plan in terms of land uses is problematic now. And it's, uh, thirty years old, the design standards are great. Uh, but there's, there's, there's a larger narrative going on, I think, because we have to meet the citizens, the needs of all citizens current and future. And, and I'm not seeing millennials here talking, uh, against this application. And, um, the, the, the time for, excuse me, I'd like to speak, please. Uh, we are past the era of having universally low-density residential suburban sanctuaries. Uh, next slide, please. The, the current reality of city building decisions is, is not the one on the left, it's the one on the right. I've, I'd certainly nostalgic. Uh, I wish everyone worked downtown like I did and do. And everyone lived within three miles of the downtown, which I do. But the one on the right's the one where we have now multiple business districts surrounding a city because suburbs have been built and now business districts are building around them. Next slide. Uh, so we have disconnect and I really, at some point, it's not gonna happen here. These are hard truths to ponder, uh, but I think it's some things we need to start talking about. And, uh, we hear your voices and we care, but there are voices who aren't here that we care about too, uh, who need housing. Housing is also one of our charges we're entrusted with. And just wanna remind those who, who say that we are, are not, um, uh, minding our trust, that's part of the story. So things have changed, as, as this slide says, uh, uh, patterns have changed, economic forces have changed. Uh, the needs of our residents have changed, as I will show. Uh, land use norms really gonna have to change, our expectations need to be discussed about what's, what's important and realistic. Next slide. Uh, the housing supply chain's disrupted, this is not new to you. Uh, post-Great Recession, two thousand seven and eight. We are now in a period we, we don't have a mobile population, people wanna retire in place. They're holding on to their homes. Uh, the homeownership rates have, uh, leveled off and dropped and they'll never return to the pre-recession levels. Uh, millennials can less afford traditional homes. Uh, housing starts are anemic, although I'm very pleased with the plats for subdivisions we have been approving lately and, and, and I think that's, I want Becky to have some business, uh, out there. Uh, but the large tracts of restricted R2 that we see spray painted out there, which were done years and years ago, really are, uh, don't, are misaligned to the needs of our future citizens. Next slide. Uh, these are just slides, these are national data, but our local data that mirrors this, you're looking at a shrinking number of retirees who are gonna stay in place. They're not gonna, uh, open up their housing. Next slide. Home inventory has shrunk. Uh, we want to get single-family homes back, uh, in the building face, but let, let's face it, it's not gonna go, uh, the home construction's not gonna come back to pre-recession levels. Next slide. Uh, housing is expensive. That's why we're seeing more rental apartment investment and constructions. Next slide. Uh, starter homes, it's, you know, those ones we talk about, the millennials who aren't present here tonight to speak their concerns, uh, it's difficult to afford the homes these days for a lot of different reasons. Uh, next slide. Here's one, this slide I use a lot. This, this is the housing starts, home construction on Little Rock. I get this from Metro Plan. Um, it's like a, a flat line. I wanna build more single-family homes, but they're not coming. And, and until they come back, we do have to provide housing. Uh, next slide. Rental rates are going up. Uh, we, we have more than forty-five percent of households in Little Rock are renters. So that's hard to disregard that. Uh, next slide. Uh, this is just the apartment capacity slide. I would like to say, you know, I keep thinking craft beers, sales and brew pubs, I reach capacity and, and they never do. As far as, um, number of players in the market and I've, I've thought apartment capacity had, had reached its peak a year or two ago, but uh, there's still demand. Next slide. Here's one I really want you to look at, the bottom three colors are of, uh, younger generations. Starting in two thousand five, they're being squeezed out of the market. These are percent of owner-occupied housing. And, um, even the above millennials, near baby boomers, uh, are being squeezed out of the market uh, in terms of homeownership. There isn't any for a lot of different reasons. And the median age fortunately for our population is still quite young. It has an increase, so we're not an aging population. Next slide. Here's one that really gets me. Look at this. The red bars represent Plaski County for persons aged twenty-five to thirty-four. This is the, the pers- margin cost as a percent of their household income. Look how much higher that is in, in the, the national average for those years and it's getting worse. It's getting a lot worse. Next slide. Here's the big one, I like to show this a lot and everyone on the commission will have to, uh, forgive me for being so redundant, but this, this shows that we're not a single business district downtown anymore. We have multiple commercial business districts all over town. Highway ten, we've got them out in Canis, Chanel, now it's moving out, uh, south, Colonel Glen, uh, where you see the, uh, outlet mall. People, people like to live near where they either work or they're getting services. And this is not just people in single-family homes, but, you know, those that service, people who live out there in single-family homes are bankers. There are people working banks, there are people working restaurants and, uh, you know, that, I hate to send a message to those that they're not welcome to live places where they're, they're, uh, working. Next slide. And this is the one, you know, this is the hard truth, but, uh, we are agents of our own change and undesirable changes that follow us. And rooftops are followed by commercial investments and multifamily housing. Uh, this is part of this, this, we need, we're all part of this conversation. We move out of the city, um, to flee certain things, but the city follows us and we'd have to come to that recognition. However, uh, that being said, this is just a narrative, a conversation. The Highway ten corridor plan is something I think we need to rethink. Uh, that, that's a policy decision for the city board. Uh, the land uses the ones that are questioned, the design standards are fine. Um, but the decision we now will come to, now the question's been called is, is, is this a good site application for this particular land use? And with that, um, I'll accept a motion.
Thank you for your analysis. I just wanna remind y'all, this is a volunteer commission, so all of that work is because he cares and he's a good guy, but, um, I move for approval of item A with all staff recommendations and comments except that of denial.
I'll second.
Okay. We have, we have a move, a motion made, it's been seconded to approve the application as filed with staff recommendations. If you're for the application, please raise your hand. Let me count, one, two, three, four, five. If you're against the application, raise your hand, one, two, three, four, five. So it's split, uh, so the motion fails, the application, uh, is denied for lack of six affirmative votes. I do, I do wanna appreciate y'all's patience tonight, I know this is a difficult issue and you, this is the second time you've come. And we're all people of good faith and, what's that, third time? Okay. We have gotten you out before six, tailgate parties are still abounding, so, uh, thank you. And we'll move on with the regular agenda. I want to be sure these people were not out here waiting for their item to be called because it was deferred. It was...
They're the same folks that were here on Hamilton.
What's that?
They're the same folks that were here on Hamilton.
Okay. So Celia Martin, Matt Faulkner, Bill Morrison. That item's been deferred, just want to be sure. Thank you. We have a couple more commissioners and the next item, by the way, will be item B regarding the LaMarche application. And if you have not filled out a card for that and wish to speak, please do so. Doesn't obligate you to speak, but certainly gives you an opportunity. But the same rules apply. I don't have as many cards for this as I did the previous application. One, two, three. I got about eight or nine in opposition, so we will, the twenty-minute rule will apply. So be as effective and expeditious as you can. I want people to have a voice, but I think we will, most of you will have a chance to Missing one commissioner.
Last commissioner, Bubas, he's quick, he can catch up.
Okay. All right, then, staff, please.
Item B, file number S-867-J, eight times. Chenal Valley Phase Thirty and Thirty-One preliminary plat located east of LaMarche Drive, between LaMarche Drive and Rawlings Road. On August eighteenth, two thousand five, the Little Rock Planning Commission approved a preliminary plat request for the site to allow subdivision of one hundred and fifteen-acre tract into two hundred and twenty-seven single-family residential lots averaging eighty-five feet by one hundred and thirty-five feet, or eleven thousand four hundred and seventy-five square feet in area. The applicant indicated a density of one point nine seven units per acre, consistent with the development pattern in the area. The applicant indicated the development would be constructed in three phases. That development did not occur. The current request is to allow the subdivision of one hundred and sixteen acres with two hundred and forty-six single-family residential lots. The development is indicated in multiple phases occurring over eight phases. The lots are indicated with an average lot size of eighty by one thirty. The plat indicates twenty-five-foot front and rear building setbacks and standard side yard setbacks. The plat includes several tracks of open space. The areas of open space will be maintained by the Property Owners Association as common green spaces. The plat indicates the construction of an emergency access from Rawlings Road to serve the new development and comply with the request of the fire department. The applicant is seeking approval of alternative pedestrian paths in lieu of sidewalks. The subdivision ordinance states that pedestrian paths can be, can replace sidewalks if approved by the planning commission. The applicant is requesting several variances from Chapter Twenty-Nine of the city code as part of the application. The applicant is requesting a variance to advanced grade Phase Thirty-One Two through Thirty-One Five with the issuance of a grading permit for Thirty-One One due to the applicant's desire to balance the cut and fill on the site. Staff recommends approval of this variance subject to the preliminary grading and drainage plan being developed for Phases Thirty-One Two through Thirty-One Five prior to the issuance of a grading permit for Thirty-One One. Secondly, the applicant is requesting a variance for slopes south side of the lots in Phase Thirty-One Three to grade to a two-to-one slope which exceeds the maximum three-to-one slope due to the existing angles of the shale plane. Staff recommends approval of the variance for the two-to-one slope. Lastly, the applicant is requesting to exceed the maximum water surface storage elevation in the stormwater detention pond of four feet due to the applicant's desire to construct detention ponds which can drain stormwater beyond the minimum requirements and to make modifications to the drainage discharge location within the subdivisions to balance the discharge flow from the site, to possibly improve some of the existing downstream flooding issues. Staff recommends approval of the variance due to the belief that this will lessen some of the historical downstream flooding. The item was deferred from your previous public hearing based on staff's concerns with site distance at the intersecting street of Everon Drive and LaMarche. Public Works' recommendation is the intersection of Everon Drive and LaMarche Drive does not provide adequate intersection site distance. The intersection shall be modified to provide safe access to Chenal Valley Phase Thirty and Thirty-One subdivision and the traveling public on LaMarche Drive in method approved by the Public Works Department. No permits, including advanced grading permits for construction of the subdivision, will be issued by staff until the intersection design is approved. In the letter from the applicant, Deltic notes that Deltic Timber Corporation with their engineer, White Daters and Associates, will work with staff to design a safe intersection which Public Works staff will support. And I think that's all I need to put in there on that. Okay? So with that, staff recommends approval of the request, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions as outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F of the Agenda staff report. Staff recommends approval of the variance request from the city's land alteration ordinance to allow grading of future phases with the development of the first phase. Staff recommends approval of the variance request to allow the two-to-one slope. Staff recommends approval of the variance request to allow the detention pond to exceed the maximum water surface storage elevation for the stormwater detention ponds. And I think Mr. Daters and Mr. Spivey probably have some additional comments that they want to add to this based on agreements and conversations with the neighborhood.
Thank you, staff. The applicant, please approach the lectern, please. Did you want to make a presentation or wait to hear concerns or do both?
Well, I was going to do that.
Okay.
So if I can kind of start again, go back. Chairman Berry, Commissioner, Director Collins, Ms. James, Mr. Overton, kind of hand down, and on a different level, my friend, Mr. Carney. Rather than engage in the usual rhetorical side trips that I sometimes do, which are often entertaining and more often not, the hour is growing late, and I'm going to immediately defer to Mr. Daters, who, as Ms. James has foreshadowed and suggested, has the meat of the matter in hand. And let me first also compliment the folks in Madison Valley who have been very receptive, open, and worked with Deltic over the past several weeks to get to where we are tonight. So let me defer to Mr. Daters. I'll reserve any comments that I have, if any, for rebuttal. Thank you.
Chairman Berry, Commissioner, staff. My name is Tim Daters, I'm an engineer with White Daters and Associates. We have been busy over since we were deferred the last time. On several occasions, we've met with some of the residents and had telephone conversations from Madison Valley. The changes that we've made in the plat, and we've made several changes in the plat itself to clarify things and help people understand items on the plat. Adjacent to Madison Valley, we had originally proposed to leave a twenty-five-foot undisturbed buffer. We've looked at our plans and voicing their concerns, and so we were able to increase that undisturbed buffer to fifty feet over about half of the distance. And over on the eastern portion where we cannot get to that width, we've agreed that in the area that's within fifty feet of their subdivision that we do have to disturb, that we'll come back in and plant dense evergreen screening to assist in re-establishing that screen in the areas that we cannot do it. We did develop in conjunction with Madison Valley, and again, they're here, so they'll be able to speak also, but they were very, I said, we've had productive meetings. We, I think, their meetings helped us to understand the issues that they face, and they also learned a little bit about what the issues that we face as we develop property. But Donna... In terms of, I'll just, these are additions that we've agreed to make a condition of this preliminary plat approval. We originally had a set of about nine conditions that we had agreed to, and after further review, Ms. Elsa sent me a note today that I responded again in yellow that, yes, we can do this, or no, we can't do this one. And so we have been communicating back and forth, and all the commitments that we make on these, we want to make part of the record and will agree to do as part of this plat. The main issues that we got into immediately were some storm drainage issues that Madison Valley was experiencing. We have committed to not increase any of the stormwater discharges coming from this development into Madison Valley. We've further committed to work with Public Works in Madison Valley and to keep them informed and be part of the process. We hope that during the submittal process, we hope to keep them informed, to address their questions, and as we go forward, to keep them a part of the design process. We have also, we've agreed that during the construction of the subdivisions, that we will keep the construction traffic during the advanced grading and the development of the streets and utilities, that we'll keep it off of Taylor Loop Road, that the site will be accessed from LaMarche and traffic will not go up and down Taylor Loop Road. And that's a pretty easy thing to agree on because the city's Taylor Loop Road project is about getting ready to start, and once that starts, nobody will want to be on Taylor Loop Road. We did agree to limit the timing of construction activities so that it would start no earlier than seven-thirty in the morning, and they'll cease at six o'clock at night, and no equipment will be started any earlier than seven o'clock in the morning. And we've agreed that we'll not begin any construction on this project till all the plans have been approved by the city of Little Rock. On the eastern portion of the project, coming out of the cul-de-sac in the southeast corner, we've got an emergency access which goes over to Breon Drive, which then ties into Rawlings Road. Deltic has agreed to construct that access in a manner so that if in the future the residents of the subdivision want to install gates on that, it'll be gated for the fire department right now, but if they want to install gates that the residents of the subdivision can use to provide access in and out only to residents of that subdivision across this access, that we're going to design it so that that can be accomplished. In terms of the additional notes that came up today, Donna, this is on that second sheet, we clarified the plantings that we would be making on the slope south of Madison Valley, the timeliness of those plantings. Along that slope, we're going to plant oaks and maples of fifty foot on centers in two staggered rows, one and a half to one inch, one inch to one and a half inch caliber, lob lolly pine saplings at ten inches on centers throughout the slope, and there'll be hydrocedra with weeping love grass. And that's on the slope area outside of the fifty-foot area that we're preserving. In the areas where we're doing advanced grading closer than fifty feet, we're going to come back with the evergreen screening, which our giant, green giant are providing, big tall green plants. And we've also on the preliminary plat, we've shown the distance that the new lots will be away from Madison Valley. The rear lot lines on the new lots vary anywhere from ninety to one hundred and twenty-five feet away from the rear lot lines on Madison Valley. And what that means is, is that houses in this subdivision, the rear of the house will be separated from the rears of the house in Madison Valley by well over a hundred feet. So there will be a good spatial gap between the two subdivisions. Again, this subdivision was originally prepared in two thousand five, Deltic did not pursue it at that point in time. They did construct some of the improvements because we built a large water line through the middle of what is Phase Thirty. Let's see, that's somewhat of a condensed version of everything, everything. Yes. And the other thing is, is that within a year of the slope, we will stabilize that slope and get the plantings in place within a year. Typically, the seedlings, the pine seedlings are available in January and February, and so that's the date that those things are all planted, and that we will get the trees planted within a year of completion work on that slope. And if I've missed anything that is inadvertent, we also added a twenty-five-foot undisturbed buffer on the western edge of the project where we, over near LaMarche Road, and that's shown on the plat, and also a condition of this plat is that twenty-five-foot undisturbed buffer on the western portion of this project.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Daters.
If there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them later then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for clarifying that, addressing those important issues, which...
If the commission's good, I'm not going to read this four-page letter into the record, and we'll just make sure that it's all incorporated into the minute record.
I think we've got a good synopsis of it from Mr. Daters. Thank you. So with that, I'll go to cars who wanted to speak in opposition, of course reserving time for Mr. Spivey, who has twelve minutes. So Matt Duncan? Joseph Peroni?
I just want to say that, you know, on behalf of myself and my family, we appreciate working with Mr. Spivey and Mr. Daters and Deltic Timber. They've really been, you know, good neighbors and have been open to suggestions that our family has had, and appreciate their efforts.
Thank you. Sylvia Delsom? Delsa? Delsa, thank you.
I'm Sylvia Delsom, president of the Madison Valley POA. So I do have to agree with Mr. Daters and Mr. Spivey. We have, Donna knows, as sure as Mr. Vince back there knows, we have gone back and forth a lot in the last two weeks. We started out miles apart, and then we've come to this today, and they've really worked with us, they've explained things to us. So at this point, Madison Valley is pleased with what they've done. We just want to reiterate that when this moves forward to the Public Works, the drainage and stuff, that we're included in those conversations and design to ensure everybody can sleep at night, because there's a lot of concern. We have a lot of water that's already coming into the subdivision. So that is our biggest concern. And the other thing, I don't know if it can be considered, is that gate on Rawlings, we really would like to see Deltic make it a completed aesthetic gating, so that way the POA would just be able to determine, they'll make it gated for all their residents or not use it, but not put that additional cost or waiting on a POA to come into effect. And the reason we're asking for that is we're trying to help alleviate some of the traffic on Taylor Loop. They don't go to Cantrell, they go to Taylor Loop, Taylor Loop to Rawlings or Henson, and it's only getting worse. Don Robert School, they've done several subdivisions along LaMarche, and it just keeps increasing and increasing. So that's why we're asking for that to be put there. That way, the new subdivision has that option to exit their own or enter their own subdivision. But otherwise, again, thank you both. Vince, thank you, and Donna, thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Lee? Barbara Lee? No. Ken Harrison? Emily Russ? They left the building. Mindy Morrell? What's that?
They were all here on the Hamilton Apartments and also on the fifteen thousand Cantrell Road.
Okay. Well, they decided not to stay for this. They did fill out cards for this issue. All right, we have the DePippas. We'll start with John DePippa, please.
Chairman Berry, Vice Chair Bubas, members of the commission. My name is John DePippa, and I live at One Deming. My name is John DePippa, and I live at One Deming Court, which is at the northwest part of the development, right there at the entrance. I have two concerns that relate to privacy and traffic. The entrance, which I think would be the main entrance, comes right by my house. Mr. Daeders and Mr. Spivey were very kind to work with me, and as I see the revised plat, it has the undisturbed buffer, and that's fine. I don't represent my neighbors to my east, but I think they would also appreciate the same undisturbed buffer from my property line east of that. My second concern, however, is with traffic. It seems to me the majority of traffic will be entering on the development from La Marsh, and a considerable portion of that will be entering quite literally in my front yard. If you use the usual multipliers, at about two hundred and fifty units times eight trips per day, it's a lot of trips, potentially two thousand vehicles in and out of that development. While not all of that will come by my house, a considerable portion of it will. With Don Roberts and the other development in the area, the traffic on La Marsh and then on Taylor Loop are increasing. I would prefer that the development include a requirement that that gate for access to and access from the development to Rawling be included as part of the development, rather than leave it to an unstated potential future. Mr. Daeders once advised me that I shouldn't depend on my neighbors to preserve my privacy. I think that's a fair statement, and so I would like to defend on you and your approval of the plat to preserve my privacy. So for those reasons, I would request that that undisturbed buffer extend further east along that boundary line, and second, that the gate for access to La Marsh be included in part of the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DePippa. Karen?
I'm Karen DePippa, and hello, all commissioners. Thank you for giving us this opportunity. We appreciate the efforts of Mr. Daeders and Mr. Spivey to help us with our buffer. And while it won't affect us directly, the remainder of the development, I would just like at this time to go on the record to request as much green space as possible to avoid clearcutting, which is what we watched when La Marsh was built, just to help reduce more of the light pollution, air pollution, utility usage. I think in this time, we all ought to be more environmentally conscious, particularly with climate change. This is something that hasn't been built yet, so we do have an opportunity to present more green space, if it's possible to change. I know it's probably a little late in the game to change the entire development. We weren't aware of any of the developments that were happening around us when we purchased our home in two thousand and five, but we've come to recognize it's happening, so I'm just asking that you try and preserve as much as possible for that. I do want to reiterate the traffic on La Marsh and Taylor Loop, because for those persons who attend Don Roberts Elementary in the mornings during rush hour, Taylor Loop is backed up almost point to point at certain points of the day. So that will add more traffic if the back gate is not available for people to enter and exit on the Rawlings side as well. So, those were my points, so I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Spivey?
Actually, I think all the rebuttals, as such as it is, is Mr. Daeders. I do want to point out something, and I, and I appreciate comments from our neighbors, because Mr. Daeders mostly, he kind of let me tag along, really has worked to try and address these concerns. As you all know on the Planning Commission, some concerns go far beyond the scope of a particular development. Before La Marsh was open, traffic on Rawling and traffic on Schnell Parkway was really intense, and what La Marsh has helped do is to rebalance it across the entire area. I mean, Mr. Peters here, he could probably give us a dissertation on it. I think that, obviously, we're not unmindful of those concerns. There's a limit as to what we can probably do with one particular development to address it. Nevertheless, it's not outside the scope of what we're interested in, and we want to be good neighbors. I think I'm going to let Tim, because I'm going to dodge the hard questions, talk to you about the buffer and the back gate, and, and then see where we get with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Daeders?
Thank you, Commissioner. We can't extend that buffer. We don't really intend on any work. It can, we can extend it further eastward. I don't know exactly how far we can, but we will extend that buffer as far eastward as we, as we can, that Mr. DePippa had mentioned. Our intention on the, the so-called rear gate to this project is that to comply with the city ordinances, we'll have to build a gate at, at the end of Breon Lane, and also a gate up at the cul-de-sac. And what we'll do is we'll make sure that all the construction of those is stuff that, that does not have to be replaced if it's converted to a gate that's operated by a remote operator. So what we'll do is we'll construct the physical gates. They'll remain locked with the fire department having a key. But if, if, once the association is complete and the residents are in the subdivision, they decide that they want to have another way to get in and out, and then it's important for them on a daily basis to have that, then they'll be able to build upon the work that Deltic has constructed with a relative modest expense, and actually construct the actuators and the remote control mechanisms that it take to get that done. But we, but we will make, all the work that we complete at this place will be towards that, that end. These property owners associations typically start with a surplus, because they're funded completely from the day that the lots are platted. And so they typically build up a surplus during the first two or three years before they're fully occupied. So there will be funds available, and they do have the resources. I think these two subdivisions have about sixteen acres of open space between them. So they're, they'll have some expenses in terms of maintaining open spaces and things like that, and the, and the construction or maintenance of a gate is not, is not going to be a big issue, should they decide that they want to do it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Anything else from the applicant?
No, thank you, Mr. Daeders.
Okay. All right, commissioners? Questions, comments? Yes, Mr. Stebbins?
About what was the original intent that road? I always wondered about that, because it's sat there.
That, 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 that road is a, is a, it's not on the master street plan, it is a collector's street. It runs, the two tracks adjacent to it are MF twelve and MF six. That road is, was constructed by District fourteen, which those two parcels are in. And when those two parcels are developed, they'll take access off of Breon. There's a, there's a median cut there in Rawling Road, and then a right turn lane, and I believe that was constructed in, my memory will fail me, somewhere around two thousand and nine, I believe, or something like that, but, but around that time, and that was one of the projects for District fourteen. District fourteen also constructed La Marsh through Deltic's property and some of the sewer main and water main extensions.
And those two tracks are owned by Deltic as well?
That's correct.
Okay. Other commissioners? Commissioner May? Ain't it nice? Thanks for noting that. Any other commissioners?
I'll be back next month.
No other comments, questions? Commissioner Bobby?
I guess we need to note that he's amending his application to extend the buffer to the east.
And as.
And add the gates as well.
As included in the letter dated August thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen.
Okay, so that all of those are in there, and they don't need to be.
They will be. Yeah, as amended to include.
Okay.
Everything he's offered today, including the letter.
Did that address the issue that you were bringing up, Mr. DePippa?
Yeah, the gates are not a part of it.
Well, so do we need to amend it for the gates, because he said he will do all the construction for the gates, except for the actuators and the remotes? That's in there. Okay. That, did, did that address your issue? Do you want to, yes?
I think my issue is not with the construction of the gates, that's fine. My issue is whether or not the gates will be open from the moment the subdivision is developed, rather than wait until the POA at some future time decides whether or not the POA wants to have access to Rawling. What I would like the approval to include is that there be access to Rawling through that gate, now without waiting for the future POA approval. That make sense?
Yes, I understand that now. Thank you.
And actually, I do have one more question about the buffer, and so I want to make sure I understand that if I, if I can. That extension of the buffer to the east was not in the letter from this afternoon, so that will be amended. Thank you.
Yes. That is correct. Applicant, the gate issue he just mentioned, do you, Mr. Daeders, want to address that, that immediately be open?
We're not prepared to place the gates in immediate operation. We prefer to let that happen as, as the option of the POA, the people who live in that subdivision.
Okay. So, before we make a motion, then it appears that we, there's a distinct amendment in addition to the letter regarding the eastward extension of the buffer. Is that correct? Okay, then.
And so that has been noted. Okay. Move for approval of Item B with all staff recommendations and comments.
Plus, the amendment, sorry, for the buffer.
As amended.
Thank you, okay. Second, questions were made and seconded, for this application as amended, with staff recommendations. Those for it, raise your hand. Those opposed? Okay. Application passes. We're going to move on to the next item before kickoff time. By the way, it's, by the way, it's on the SEC Network, if you have that channel, so.
Item number H, file number Z dash ninety-two nineteen, Mickles Short Form PDC, located at twenty-nine oh four South Arch Street. The applicant is requesting rezoning of the site from R four, two-family district to PDC, planned development commercial, to allow the use of an existing one and a half-story frame house as a beauty salon. The applicant has indicated the salon will house up to four operators. The building contains one thousand one hundred and six square feet on the first floor and four hundred and forty-eight square feet on the second level. The applicant is proposing to extend the existing drive from South Arch Street to the rear yard, allowing one-way access to the rear yard, and to place a paved parking area within the rear yard. The customers will then exit the site onto the existing alley located behind the homes, which is paved the entire length from West Twenty-Ninth to West Thirtieth Street. Parking for the beauty salon is typically based on one parking space per two hundred gross square feet of floor area. The typical parking required for a structure containing the fifteen fifty-four square feet is seven spaces. In addition to the salon use, the site contains an existing accessory dwelling within the rear yard. The accessory dwelling will remain, which would typically require an additional parking space. The applicant is proposing to provide four parking spaces in the rear yard of the home. The applicant has also provided a letter of agreement from a nearby business, True Riders Motorcycle Club, located at twenty-eight twenty-two South Arch Street, to utilize eight to ten parking spaces, and also to use the back parking lot if additional parking is needed to support her salon use. The applicant has indicated signage will be placed within the front yard of the home. The sign is proposed with a maximum height of six feet, maximum sign area of twenty-four square feet. Building signage will be limited to ten percent of the front facade area. The hours of operation are indicated Monday through Saturday from eight to seven, although the applicant has indicated probably most Mondays won't be open. But the stylists will set the appointments and provide their own schedules. The lot is fifty-foot wide, which does not allow for typical minimum required landscape strip along the northern and southern perimeters adjacent to the proposed drive extending from South Arch Street to the rear yard, nor the parking pad within the rear yard. Adjacent to the drive along the southern perimeter, a one-foot, eight-inch landscape strip is proposed. As the drive extends into the rear yard, the landscape strip along the northern, southern perimeters is indicated at five feet. Since the site is located within the designated mature area of the city, the landscape ordinance would allow the, a reduction in the landscape strip to six feet, nine inches. The zoning ordinance, for, as far as land use buffering, would also allow it to be reduced to six feet, nine inches. Staff is not supportive of the applicant's request. The site is located within an area that is single-family residential and is indicated as residential low on the city's future land use plan. Although there are commercial uses located to the north, the commercial uses do not extend south of West Twenty-Ninth Street, and staff does not feel this is an appropriate location for the placement of commercial business. Staff recommends denial of the request.
Thank you, staff. Is applicant here, please?
Good evening to everyone that's on the panel. She's correct with what she said, but we are going to remove the building in the back, so there will be accurate parking. And the motorcycle club, which is twenty-foot, I guess, from my beauty salon, that they gave me permission to park over there, they are not open through the week. So we can utilize that parking space. Most of the time, the beauty shop will be appointments only, so it won't be a lot of traffic in and out of the salon. And it's a Christian facility. We're bringing it into the community. We're trying to make something happen in that community. My mother have lived there for twenty years. Nothing positive really in that community, so I just want to bring this business into the community, so there will be some positive activity going on for the young people that's there. I do do ministry out there on weekends, so. And so if I tie that building down, I can possibly get like forty-five cars back in the back rear.
Thank you. Do you have anything else you want to say? You may want, I have a card on this, you may want to speak to, to their issues after they get up and speak.
Oh, sure, sure, of course.
Thank you. Rosalyn Scruggs, please.
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Rosalyn Scruggs. I live at twenty-nine oh four South, twenty-nine hundred South Arch. I live next door to the proposed beauty shop. I am in support of Ms. Mickles' idea for the beauty shop. However, I feel that it is in the wrong place. It should be in a different location. As was mentioned earlier, it is a residential area. The proposal that she is making regarding construction of a parking lot to the backyard is adjacent to my backyard. So, tearing down that building, tearing, taking down those beautiful trees in the backyard would really be a hindrance to the appearance of the dwelling, especially, pardon me, affecting my property. I feel that her vision is good, however, it needs to be in another location. And I am opposed to it being at that location, not to her idea, but I'm opposed to it being in that location right next door to my house.
Thank you, Mrs. Scruggs. App, would you like to, would you like to say anything else?
Yes, the trees that she's talking about is on my property. They are going to be taken out anyway because of the stumps, so those trees will be removed. And I don't think the beauty shop would bring any kind of harm to her property. I think it would add increased value to the community. I mean, it would be something positive going on for the young people that live there, low-income families, for their children.
Thank you.
Uh-huh, thank you.
Commissioners? Commissioner Stebbins?
I was just curious, where was the additional parking with, did you say a motorcycle club?
Yes, it's a motorcycle club, and additional parking, that motorcycle club can hold up to over twenty cars or more.
Where, where is that? Where, where is that?
It's right off of 2800 block.
I think it's where the cursor is, right? Walter, is that one, right there?
Right here.
Is that a business or a?
It's a business, but it's not open through the week. And so they did give me permission to park over there because it's Plinning Park, and it's not far from the salon.
Commissioner Hamilton?
The, the property just south of your location, is, is that a resident as well?
That's south of my location?
Yes, yeah, where the cursor is.
Well, there is several businesses around there. There's Evans Motors, um...
So where the cursor is, that property that's there right there, is, is, is that a residential?
That's right there on the corner.
Right, right where the cursor is pointing.
No, this is the motorcycle club.
That's a home?
Oh, okay.
And then the, the, the property right south of that as well, that's, are all these homes in that block?
Yes.
They are currently, okay.
Current.
Okay.
So the motorcycle club is right here.
Yeah, any other questions or comments, commissioners?
Move for approval of item H with all staff recommendations and comments except that of denial.
Thank you, Commissioner Bobby. Still here a second?
Yes.
Okay. The motion's been made a second to approve this application, except for that of staff recommendations and now. So if you are for this application, raise your hand.
Oh, nobody right there.
If you oppose this application, raise your hand.
Okay. Well, respect to all of you all. Thank you so much.
Okay, well, thank you so much. Appreciate your initiative.
Uh-huh, thank you.
Ms. Mickles, you, you have the right of appeal to the mayor and board of directors, so if you want to get with me, I'll show you, I'll help you.
It's too late to turn it off. We didn't realize that you were speaking about something.
What, what, excuse me, what, what, what'd you want to speak about?
Item number five, about our property. It's, it's a shopping plaza, item number five, that's being built next to our apartment complex, and we didn't realize we had to turn one of these in, so...
Um, I don't remember. You know what? Let's do that after, do that citizen communication after this, this next item. Because I believe item five, it was on the consent agenda, but you're welcome to speak during citizen communication. It, it, it was approved to move forward to the city board.
No.
It was not?
No, it's a zoning site plan review. It does not go to the board.
It does not go to the board. So it is approved, and this is the final decision point on that. Anyhow, you're welcome to say something that citizen communications after that, but that was, I don't know when you came in, asked for cards, you know, multiple times, so...
Right, we just had questions about it, and we were told to come here about it.
Okay.
We got here right at four, so...
Okay. Well, let's hear this next item first, and then I certainly don't mind you getting up and speaking and, okay. So, next item we all been waiting for?
Item number 12, file number Z-9246, 19400 Lawson Road Longform PCD, located behind 19400 Lawson Road at the end of Vicki Lane. The request is allow the placement of a 40-foot by 40-foot metal building on the property be used as a medical marijuana dispensary as defined by the city of Little Rock zoning ordinance. The plan indicates the placement of a paved parking area along the southern and western sides of the building. The applicant has indicated a minimum pavement width of 20 feet will be extended from the current end of the paving on Vicki Lane to the property. The applicant has indicated there will be a dumpster located on the site. The hours of dumpster service are limited to 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday. The dumpster will be fully screened as typically required by the ordinance. The applicant has indicated signage will be placed on the front facade of the building. The sign will not exceed 10% of the front facade area. Ground signage is indicated 12 feet in height and 32 square feet in area. The days and hours of operation of the business are proposed from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Monday through Saturday. The plan indicates the placement of a 10-foot security fence around the perimeter of the site. The applicant notes the height and construction material of the fence is a requirement by the state licensing board. The fence will be a chain-linked fence. Staff is not supportive of the applicant's request. The applicant is seeking rezoning of the site from residential to commercial to allow for commercial business on the site. Site is located at the end of a substandard street and is within a residential area. The commercial uses in this area are limited to Lawson Road. There are no commercial uses located in the area along Beecham Road, which will be used as access to Vicki Lane and the site. The site is indicated on the future land use plan as residential low. This category typically allows for low-density residential uses, commonly single-family homes, and staff does not feel it's an appropriate location for the placement of commercial use. Staff recommends denial.
Okay. Like staff, applicant, would you please come up, please, and state your name and present your case for your application?
My name is Nathan Mann, and I appreciate you guys seeing me tonight. I've never had to do anything like this, so I really didn't have anything prepared to, you know, as far as what I needed to say, I hate to say it, but I do have two letters from residents of Vicki Lane. I don't know, can I give these to you guys or Donna, I suppose?
Please.
As far as the area in question, I mean, we own pretty much most of the land around it, to be honest. We own around 40 acres on Lawson. This is the backside. The main reason we're wanting to put it in this area is because there is a requirement for the dispensary to be 1,500 foot from the closest church, school, or daycare. And honestly, that's the, that's the only area I could get to get within that requirement. We do have, you know, as far as the access is coming off of Vicki Lane, and that is a, a legal easement. And honestly, like I said, I'm, I'm, really don't know what all I, I would need to do, but as far as, I'm trying to cover all my bases here, to be honest. And I just, I honestly asked you guys to, you know, you know, give this some thought. I mean, the main reason we're wanting to do this, I think it would bring a good amount of revenue to our neighborhood out where we live. I mean, I was born and raised there, as was three generations prior to me, on this land. So, I mean, we've been there forever, me and my family. I mean, as far as the surrounding area, I understand it's residential, but there's really not a lot of residents in that area, and most of them are for this, and I could, you know, I can get proof of that. They think it would bring into the other businesses that are located on Lawson Road, because you basically have to come right past them, and if they're gonna be out in that area doing business with us, that could possibly bring business to the other businesses in that area. And honestly, I just, another thing I think it would be good for us in this area, you have a lot of people that are coming out there for medical use, and a lot of people, it's serene, it's off to itself, and I really don't see how it would bother anybody where it's located, to be honest. And being as far back as it is off the beaten path, I believe it would give them, you know, kind of keep people calm, they'll be more comfortable coming to this area to get their medicine, to be honest. So if you guys would just, you know, give it some thought, see what you think, and I guess let me know what you think on it.
Okay. Thank you. We might have some questions or comments.
Okay.
I just have a question that related to where is Lawson Road relative to the side of the mall?
South, yes.
Other commissioners? Comments? This is our first application for a dispensary. Y'all may recall that we just passed the policy and the ordinance that we treat dispensary applications as if they are retail pharmacies, and it would be consistent in that vein. So as you might imagine, if a pharmacy were to ask to apply for a zoning out here for a pharmacy, what would our disposition be, having no access, public access and roads? So anyhow, want to hear a motion? Or you won't say anything?
I move for approval of item number 12 with all staff recommendations and comments except that of denial. Lots of denials.
Can I hear a second to his motion?
Second question.
Yes.
I, I, I guess I'm perplexed as to where we're, we as a society are supposed to put these suckers.
I agree, sir.
It's 1,500 feet from everything known, everything that you would come in contact with, but yet we're in the dilemma of taking a site, and I know we're, I know we're lost in LaMarche, kind of out there, and, and having to treat it like it's a pharmacy. I mean, I'm, the people passed the motion, I'm just not sure where we're gonna end up putting dispensaries, dispens...
Well, that's a good question. Were, were you there when we had the discussion on the, the city ordinance regarding where...
Maybe they did it on purpose.
Well, yes, but where do you find it? I just find it hard to find the physical site that coincides with the law and the pharmacy.
It's hard to do, sir. I'll be honest. I'm lucky that I have the land I've got, or I'd be in trouble. I wouldn't have a chance at all.
That's why, it might have been why they did it. I understand. It's an interesting question. Appreciate so noted. We, we do have a motion. Commissioner May, did you want to say something? Well, it could be pertinent. We're among friends.
Well, the problem the city has with this, it's not zoned for a commercial entity anyhow. So, I mean, even though it may be a good place for it, it's not zoned for it.
That was, that was the, that was the point of the city ordinance that we had passed. Well, there's, I guarantee, there's four dispensers will be allowed in central Arkansas. I'll, I'll guarantee you, if they pass the applications to the state, there'll be someone who will ask for a dispensary and a place currently zoned for that. I would be very surprised if we don't get another application in a location where there's, there's public access and already has a by right zoning for pharmacy, but I might be wrong. You know, I guess the bucolic aspect of dispensaries, just never thought about that, Now, did I hear a second to the motion?
Oh, second.
Okay. So, motion's been made to approve this application with staff recommendations, except that for denial. If you're for this application, raise your hand.
I'm gonna have to be called.
All right. Those opposed to the motion application, raise your hand. It's been turned down, so sorry. Okay.
Do you have the right of appeal to the board of directors? If you'll get with me, I'll tell you what's needed to do to, to make that appeal process.
Okay, thank you.
No, no, come by.
Ma'am, would you like to get up and approach the podium? Have you had questions about that? You know, I know it's very complex when we, they go through consent agenda, but maybe staff can answer your questions now.
Sure. My name is Kami Jones. I'm represent, representing the Wellington at Chanel Apartments, and item number five says that they will be building a Chanel center, and we were just wanting to know if it would have any adverse impact on our property as far as the construction, shutting down our driveway, stuff like that. So I do apologize for the inexperience that I have.
That's okay. Staff, would you like to speak to that in terms of traffic?
I can, but it might be better if you just come by, since the commission has already approved it. If you'll just come by our office at 723 West Markham, I can sit down with you, show you their plans, show you all the comments, and I think that'd be a whole lot easier than trying to do it here.
Absolutely.
So, eight to five, Monday through Friday, 723 West Markham, which is two blocks to the, to the west, corner of Markham and State Street, first floor.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. No problem. Any other for citizens communications before kickoff? We're adjourned.